Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silent meditation. Alleged to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open this meeting of the Montague County Commission this February 26, 2025. It's a little after 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners are here. We will begin with our consent and approval with our county administrator, Renetta McForre. Good morning.
Good morning. We have six exonerations. Excuse me. $4,346.43 minutes for February 19th, 2025. You also have border view and equalization minutes for February 12th, February 14th, and February 20th. Vouchers, general county fund, $392,671.91. Coal severance, $4,008.29. 911, 9945. Chestnut Ridge Park, $9,007.2860. Mason Dixon Park, $359.91. Mon County Center, $923.39. Transportation levy, $49,431.98. Library levy, $12,132.64. EMS levy, $104,992.75. Opioid settlement funds, $4,153.84. Assessor's valuation, $5,314.75. Day report center, $112,840.3. Payroll, $1,140,674.74. Law enforcement forfeiture, $6,465.45. Federal forfeiture, $4,800. Purchasing card vouchers, general county, $12,974.63. 911, 220.40. Home confinement, $7,097.70. Chestnut Ridge Park, $607.87. Mon County Center, $232.07. Assessor's valuation, $5,195.45. ARPA, $73,637 for a voucher total of $1,950,283.56. We have one budget revision that requires in-house approval for general fund in the data processing account. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website. Fiduciary orders for February 26, 2025.
I want to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I do want to note that out of that general county amount is the first payment for the Grandville lights.
Yes.
In the amount of $278,973.4. So, Mayor, you'll be saving your check in the mail.
Actually, we'll be in the mail.
We have some additional fiduciary items. First, the John Robert Linta estate. We have a claim from W. Medicine and an objection filed by representative of the decedent, the estate. My understanding is this is a car accident case with a death, and the objection basically is stating that the, there hasn't, it's a medical bill essentially from W. Hospital, and there hasn't been enough time for either the med pay from the car insurance or the decedent's regular insurance. I guess he was in the hospital a couple of days before passing. So, there hasn't been enough time for the insurance to run its course. That's the basis for the objection. So, is there a...
So, I'd recommend we take no action and just let the process run its course.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Travis estate. There was a letter from the, recommendation from the fiduciary commission on a prior objection from George Armstead, fiduciary commissioner, stating, Madam Clerk, with regard to the above references state, which would be the state of Sharon C. Travis, please be advised that the objection to the final settlement of the estate has been withdrawn, and accordingly, I recommend that the final settlement of the estate be approved and the estate closed.
Okay. And that fiduciary order was provided to all interested parties, and they technically have 10 days to respond. And then they, if they respond during that time, obviously, we'll hear about it. But otherwise, I would recommend that we take no action and let this be closed in the regular orders that would occur on April 2nd, 2025.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
One clarification, though. At that time, we would state that we approve the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, it's going to come in your regular orders, and you wouldn't have an action item, except approve your regular orders.
Which would include his recommendation if we do nothing.
I think it would be the closure of the estate would be in the orders.
Yeah. It's just, at any time do we have to make a recommendation on his?
I don't think so, not in this case.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have more or less some correspondence from the clerk regarding the Fort Queen estate. If you recall, in the past, we had directed the, named the administrator had been petitioned to be removed, a request that we granted, and we directed that she return her letters of administration back into the clerk, and that action has taken place.
Yes.
So, there's really no action required by us.
Well, it's a circuit court. It's a circuit court case, and you guys ordered the estate to be frozen.
Right.
Until the circuit court case plays out. So, at the time that you froze the estate, she was supposed to return her letters of administration.
Okay. And she sends, there's still...
Since done then, yes.
There's still no action until it comes back from court.
The final fiduciary matter I have involvement in regarding my other job, so I'm going to hand the gavel over to Sean to handle this part of it, and I'll step down to respond.
Okay. So, in this particular state, this is the estate of Cheryl L. Vanaman, and we have a petition to revoke the probate order. As part of that estate, Jeffrey L. Arnett is the executor. So, Jeff, I'll let you respond in regards to this particular order.
Thank you. The request essentially is based upon the premise that the decedent was a resident of the state of South Carolina rather than the state of West Virginia. We had, her sole heir and daughter is a resident of Montague County on Standard Avenue and First Ward, and the decedent was sort of a nomad, lived hotel to hotel, didn't really have a residence. The closest she had to a residence was her daughter's house, where she would stay for extended periods of time during the year. It was based on that that we presumed that, or took the position that her residence was West Virginia, Montague County, closest to a residence that someone of her particular pattern of living could be. So, based upon that, the will was admitted to probate, and I was appointed as the executor. We also had reason to believe at the time that there were assets in West Virginia that we could find and administer through the estate. That turned out to not be the case. There were no assets in West Virginia. As such, there seems to be no reason to have the estate administered in Montague County in West Virginia. My understanding is that some half-brothers of hers, or step-brothers of the decedents, have opened an estate in South Carolina, hence the request to quash this estate so we don't have competing estates. Based upon that, the estate here, we have no problem with it, the estate being revoked in Montague County. There were a couple of things to note in the request from the petition that I would just like to note that he, he had asked that the executor not receive any compensation for duties as executor. I would not seek any, there's no funds in the estate that we're aware of to even pay any, any fees, but I would gladly waive any fee due as executor. That indicated that we had not presented a death certificate to Montague County. Of course, you can't open an estate without presenting a death certificate, so we did present a death certificate from South Carolina in order to open the estate. Asked that any assets collected be returned to the estate administration in South Carolina. There were no assets taken by my action as executor, or anything obtained in the state of West Virginia. And the daughter did obtain some assets prior to the administration in Montague County when she went down to collect her mother's personal effects. Most substantive of those assets were some storage lockers in South Carolina, which the keys were already turned over to the South Carolina estate, so that's been taken care of. There were no funds to return. The petitioner asked that funds be placed on probate with the clerk, or placed in holding with the clerk, but there were no funds to turn over. And the petitioner further asked for court costs essentially for filing the petition here to remove. We would, we would object to that, as there are no funds in the estate to pay that anyway. And normally in the law, unless it's a statutory provision that allows for the recollection of cost and attorney's fees, those normally aren't granted by a court of law. Of course, this not being a court of law, but they're asking the same thing of the, of the commission, so.
Okay. Commissioner Bloom, do you have any questions?
No, I think I understand it.
Okay. To keep this clean, I would recommend two motions. First, I'd like to, I would recommend a motion to deny the petition to revoke probate order.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll second. Well, you made the motion, I recommended it. You made the motion.
I'll move.
I'll second it. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll make a second motion to, I would recommend a second motion to revoke the probate order in the estate of Cheryl L. Vanaman.
Move to revoke.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
I will second that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We clear?
I think, I think so.
Okay.
Am I allowed to come back up?
President, would you please resume your post?
Yeah, we can't have the meeting run if you're not up there, so.
Thanks for your clarification on that, Jeff.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
No, it's a very different situation, so.
Yeah, that's the first time we've ever had that. It's my time, well.
Tom's been here for...
Fifty years.
We're going to talk about it.
Yeah.
Let me pull my agenda back up here for just a second. All right. Moving on, introduction of new employees, personnel changes. First, we have Camp Muffley. So, come on up, Seth, and your prospective employee, and this will be Seth's last appearance before us as superintendent of Camp Muffley, as he is moving on to, I won't say greener pastures, but different pastures. So, thank you for your service to us, and we wish you the best of luck in the future, but please proceed with, proceed presenting your employee.
Thank you all so much. So, this is Mr. Kenneth Barber. He will be coming on as the new full-time maintenance for Camp Muffley Park at $15 an hour with benefits.
Wonderful.
Okay. I move that we approve the position as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome to Camp Muffley.
And wish you the best.
Thank you. You as well.
Look forward to working with you out there.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Seth. Next, we have Mason Dixon Historical Park. Angela, come on up, please. And you're not taking off on us, are you?
No.
Okay.
Good morning. This is Mr. Kevin Hooton. He's going to be taking over the full-time maintenance staff position at Mason Dixon Historical Park. He'll be full-time with benefits, starting at $15 an hour as well.
Great.
I move that we approve the position as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Kevin. Look forward to working with you. Next, we have Facilities Department, Harry "Jack" Eldred, custodial supervisor, full-time, a transfer from litter control. Anything more to add to that?
Pretty much it. Salary, $38,000 annually, start March 1st.
I move that we approve the position as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think it's a great move for Jack, as we call him. I've worked with him for several years with the litter control and the recycling, and he will be surely missed, but also I'm glad in the position he's moving into, I'm looking forward to that.
Yes, and this is a new position.
Right.
This is a position that we've created to coordinate with our, our janitorial staff and our janitorial support staff that we do through contract. So, hopefully providing a better service, some due diligence, and it's going to be the person that is going to make, go around the county and make sure where there's issues with the, with the cleaning staff and address those, and really kind of be our eyes and ears out in the field and make sure that that's a, that service is, improves across all of our county buildings, so, down here on the downtown campus.
And he'll also be working as a working supervisor as well, also providing cleaning services and hopefully improving, improving the colonias of our buildings and by making sure that the paid help we have is doing what they're supposed to be doing, but outside and inside, as well as doing it himself. So, we had a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, the assessor's office with Patrick.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I ask approval for the hiring of Levon Weber as a transfer land book deputy. She'll be replacing Melissa Perkins, who had to leave us rather unexpectedly. Her, Ms. Weber's start date will be March 1st. It'll be a full-time position, benefits eligible with a 90-day introductory period.
Great. I move that we approve the position as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have comments from the public. This is the public comment section of our meeting. You're welcome to come forward, anyone. State your name and address, and take a couple of minutes to tell us what's on your mind. So, I'll open the public comment. Anyone? Mr. Dean, please come up.
So, I was here last week regarding some flooding next to my business. First question is, has there been any progress, thoughts, discussion regarding that? Second topic is the homeless and some of my other businesses. I have a shed sales business, several locations, and I'm not real political, so I don't know what the current protocol is for homeless people standing in the intersections and bumming for money. So, if you guys could just update me on what the current law is about that, and that's pretty much it.
Great. Well, we normally don't respond during public comment, but we'll address your questions in our...
Okay. I'm not familiar.
Well, that's all right.
Perfect timing.
You're allowed to ask questions, which we'll, we'll comment on this specifically in our, in our remarks at the end of the meeting.
Great, thank you.
So, thanks for coming in. Anyone else? No, we're going to close comments for the public. Next, we have grants with our grant administrator and office manager, Colleen Kuhn. Good morning.
Good morning. I have a request for reimbursement for the community development block grant in the amount of $2,060.80.
Okay. I move that we approve the request as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Okay.
Next, correspondence. First, we have a receipt of an application from Darren Glitz for an appointment to the Montague County Planning Commission. Noted. Next, engagement agreement with the arbitrage group to complete calculations of arbitrage earnings for the following bond series. One, Series 2020A, University Town Center Subordinate Special District Excise Tax Revenue and Refunding Bonds. Two, Series 2021, Montague County Justice Center Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds.
These are being noted under correspondence. There was a time element to this, plus our administrator has a certain level of authority to sign off on these type of agreements, lower, lower-level dollar agreements, but to be completely transparent, we're noting it in the correspondence section so that the public is aware. Is there anything else regarding this, Renetta?
No, just that, that there's a five-year anniversary date for the, for bonds like these, that the arbitrage has to be calculated. And so, our trustee said, you know, it's, we're coming up on the time for the Justice Center bonds and for one of the University Town Center bonds. So, we went ahead and had that calculation done. They've already gotten a report back to me, and there is no arbitrage, so there won't be any additional IRS reporting required for both of these sets.
Cool.
Okay. Excellent.
Moving on, sorry, I lost my place here. Consideration to prove a...
Wait, I have more correspondence.
Oh, I'm sorry. My fault.
Hold on, I got more correspondence.
Oh, there, I scrolled up too high. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so, we've got an additional application for the Mon County Building Commission to be noted, Raynard Glimp. He is appointed, or applied to be on the planning, or, I'm sorry, the building commission. This is something that we've had advertised for a while, whenever Denny Paluga resigned a couple of months ago. So, we'll probably need to do that appointment sooner rather than later.
You know that in staff reports, we'll put it on the next available, if there's no objection, we'll put it on the next available.
No.
Take some time to review the application, discuss it in staff, and then we address it maybe at the next meeting. Any other correspondence?
I do not have any other correspondence. I believe Commissioner Bloom, you have a piece of correspondence?
I'm going to do it under my report. Sure, should I?
Okay, I do have a piece of correspondence from Commissioner Bloom, and I were at Empty Bowls, and a citizen talked to us about big trucks pulling onto River Road, and said, consistent with what we usually tell people, if you send us an email, we'll, we'll forward that on to DOH and make them available. So, we did receive that email, and Commissioner Bloom, if you would forward that on to...
Yes, I will.
What they're really asking is just put a sign or something up, says road not suitable for large trucks, because big trucks go up there and then they get hung up, and it's a problem, so.
And we've worked with the businesses, and they've even explained it to them, but the truckers are independent, they're using the GIS system, GPS system, GPS system, and not listening. So, we're hoping that if we put some signs up, that they may be able to read it.
And I appreciate you sending that out on.
Sure.
Thank you.
And the hope is, once the bridge is completed and Harmony Grove is completed...
We won't be needing this.
That the trucks would have a natural inclination to take those routes rather than...
Exactly.
Our windy roads by the river, so. Nothing else? Moving on, no unfinished business, moving on to new business. Consideration to approve requisition number 100 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition, excuse me, requisition is for $2,500, and those funds will be paid to the arbitrage group for their work.
I move that we approve requisition number 100 for the UTC Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, consideration to approve a supplemental memorandum made between the Morgantown Utility Board and the Montague County Commission in relation to unused ARPA funds from the mountaintop sewer line extension project to be redirected to the Chaplain Hill sanitary sewer project.
So, move.
I second.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sure Sean will have...
Yeah, I know.
Well, what had happened is when we did the original sewer project in the industrial park, the value of that was 3.4 million. It came in at 3.1 million, and at that time, we were entering in negotiations for the Chaplain Hill project. So, MUB just put those funds on deposit and has been crediting those funds for expenses against the Chaplain Hill project, which the administrator and I were, had to track that as we went forward, and even when we did our final ARPA funding report, we had to adjust those two budgets. So, I imagine that this, this is the result of MUB realizing that they had to have that adjusted too. So, it's similarly, just making the paperwork all line up, it's redefining the value of the project over here, redefining the project here, so that both are accurate and it's documented.
Great. So, we had a, any more discussion? No? The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Reports from elected officials? You want to make a statement about your lights real quick? They look pretty good. You should take a bow at least.
Yeah, you need, yeah, let's get, let's get some more about the lights.
Mayor Patty Lewis from Granville?
They should be on and functional today.
Wow. Congratulations. Thank you.
So, we still have some work to do on the markings, obviously, on the asphalt, and some concrete work to do, and that'll come, weather permitting, as soon as possible. But I will report one thing, this doesn't have anything to do with Granville. We had family come in from Jacksonville, Florida last week, and they were able to get tickets to go to Chestnut Ridge Park. They were so impressed, and I think that's worth noting. They said the, the employees up there were so accommodating, so kind, and so welcoming, and I think, you know, kudos to Chestnut Ridge Park.
We'll pass that along to our superintendent and our director of parks for sure, and the employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
And thank you for your work on the traffic lights. We had an idea, we had a lot of complaints, you guys took the ball and ran with it, and pretty much just asked us for a check and did everything else. So, we greatly appreciate all your work, and it's going to really change the, change the scope of those intersections, so.
And please relay that thanks to your counsel, and of course, your Latina, that goes for you.
I was talking to Latina. Alrighty, so, moving on, reports from, we have no more elected officials in the room. Nope, Mark's not there, that's Patrick. Reports from county commissioners. I lost my note, but I think it's Sean today.
It's Sean.
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, I went to Charleston for WV Corp., our risk board meetings. So, I was down there Thursday and Friday. Saturday, I was a host at Empty Bowls, which I think was another very successful year for Empty Bowls. I'm sure Commissioner Bloom will talk about that a little bit more. And then on Sunday, we went to Charleston for the County Commission Association of West Virginia Conference and was down there through Monday. Today's a regular day, we do have multiple work sessions. Tomorrow, we have our fleet management pre-bid conference, so we haven't had any questions yet, so hopefully that our fee is running very smoothly, and we'll get to the point where we can close questions, and we should be expecting the, the bids in mid-March. Friday, we have staff reports, and then I have a Comcast tag-up. That's all I have, Jeff.
Yeah, I have a lot, and all good news. Let's first talk, the Empty Bowls was a great success, it's great to see the community come together, and as Sean had mentioned before, yeah, I have a great time. First of all, the music is all over, classic rock, so that gets me moving. And yes, I danced a lot with the people, I danced on the chairs, I did not dance on the tables, that is, I did not get on the tables. But it was a great time, and I really, really appreciate everyone who volunteered and donated to it. Second, as Sean said, Jeff, Sean, and I went down with Renetta to Charleston, and normally when we go down there, we never meet with anyone. It was an extremely, I believe, successful outing for Montague County and for its residents. We'll start with this. I got to meet with the governor's office, one of the individuals said, well, what do you want from us? And I said, the two things we need to know about is Harmony Grove and Exit 155. I have their card, I gave it to Renetta so I wouldn't lose it, and we're supposed to write an email just verifying those two issues. So, that was a start. The second was, we got to see a number of our delegates, Joe Statler, Mike Olivera, John Williams, Dave McCormick, and we got introduced by Joe Statler. And I will say, I've been down for 30 years in Charleston, usually on the outside protesting, but it was the first time in my life I've ever been introduced by name. So, I was, I was very excited, and I got to sit next to Jessica Lynch. So, it was a, it was a really great time. Now, that was the good news. The better news was that while we were down there, the need, certificate of need was defeated 13 to 12 in the subcommittee. However, I was told it had, it's called a cat bill, and a cat bill has nine lives, and it'll be back. So, the, but at least after the first life, we were able to hold off on that. Then, while I was down there, I separated a little bit from the commissioners and ended up talking about 30 to 40 delegates, voicing my concerns about the revoking of the mandate of childhood vaccines. I can tell you that in talking with other counties, I'm excited to say that a lot of pressure in the 48 hours when I was down there, I won't say one delegate said, I've never received 100 phone calls from my small county, and they were all against this revoking of the mandatory vaccine. So, I am hoping there's going to be more discussion on it, and something will come out of it. But it was a slam dunk when we first went down there, but I want to thank my colleagues for working with me on that issue. And finally, which kind of goes with what you had asked. First, you had asked what the laws are. We have a Montague County Commission Ordinance regulating pedestrian and vehicle safety. We've had that for twenty months, um, and several months ago, Mountain State Justice is suing us for this ordinance, but we still have the ordinance on the books, so I do want you to know that. The problem is, and I know exactly, I feel sorry, in fact, my wife even said, I feel sorry for the person who owns some of these sheds, which is right there, because you must need full-time supervision or security just to keep them out, and the problem is, that is city, and we're trying to work with the city and the county, the city where they stand. So because of the road, they annex, when they annex Walmart, they annex the roadway, and the city tried to have an ordinance, they got sued, and I can't wait for the public to find out what the settlement is, because I think the public's going to be shocked. That will be made public real soon, the actual settlement. So they are in limbo, but they are still under a different ordinance trying to work with it, but it is full-time, as you said, all over the place. I'll talk with you afterward, I know. Um, but while down there, I'm pleased to announce House Bill Twenty Eight Ninety-Two by Delegate Shamlin, Haw, Turelli, um, Heckert and Akers. Montague County joined on, Mr. Turelli, but this was brought up by the other counties across the state, and if the county commission will allow me to read it, because it's only two paragraphs, it's very simple. Prohibition on pedestrians from standing in roadways or right-of-ways. A, legislative findings. The legislature finds that the presence of persons standing in the middle of the roadway on right-of-ways or near the roadway creates a significant public safety hazard for those individuals and motorists. Enactment, it is prohibited for anyone to stand in a roadway or on a right-of-way. So to answer your question, if we can get this bill passed, then it's statewide, and I believe it will have an impact on what is happening with you. I am truly sorry, I can only imagine what you're going through, because we, I'm there all the time and I can see the individuals who are loitering on your property, and I hope that we can help you in that manner. But I do want to thank, um, our delegates, and out of that comes the final thing, which I've asked my, uh, commissioners to be permitted to do. While down there, Cabell County, Canal County, Berkeley County and Mon County got together. We are the larger counties, and since there are fifty-five counties and a few small or large counties, sometimes we're not heard. With the permission that I'm asking from the other commissioners, we would have an informal, large county caucus to just disseminate information, discuss current issues and meet when needed, and it'd be on issues and ideas and concerns, and I would ask, it's, it's an informal, and I don't know if I need it officially, but I'm saying it publicly, to move forward on this, and it's nothing real directive, it's just an informal meeting. So that is what we are planning, I would like to do, so that is my report, very positive. I don't know if you want to respond to that or if you have any problems with me working with the others.
If we have any problems with collaborating with other counties, we do that very well.
Okay.
Sir, that's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've got a few things. Um, first off, I announced last week, I was just doing a little personal, uh, collection drive for the flood victims in, in the southern part of the state. Um, I kind of deferred to the, the Titan Roofing Group that did the big collection at Suncrest Town Center, and, and we did collect, um, I'd like to thank Joe and Nancy Sheets who, uh, who donated a good number of items. My son actually went out on his own and purchased a bunch of bottled water that we donated. Pantry Plus More provided six or seven cases of water, some cleaning supplies, paper towels, various different things, thank you to that. And then our employees at the Circuit Clerk's Office all got together and, and gave us seven gift cards to Walmart and Sam's to send down the, to the folks down there, and we, we put those on the trucks with the, with the Titan Roofing folks, so I'd like to thank everybody for that. It was just a little bit that we did, but I guess, as they say, every little bit helps. Um, as to your question about the flooding, um, we, we haven't, we had in, with going to Charleston, having incredibly busy week, we didn't have staff reports Friday, so we weren't able to discuss that. We'll address it this week at our staff reports and, on how we might want to proceed with that, but we didn't have an opportunity to meet and, and discuss with that. So the only time we really did get together and talk about issues we're going to do is at our staff reports, other than what we do in the public meetings, so we'll, we'll take a look at that on Friday. As Tom addressed for you, the, the current, uh, your answer to your other questions, um, we have been, just to address for a second, we've received a, a number of petitions for the Planning Commission, people that want to be, um, on that, that commission, and we will, uh, we'll be addressing that in the coming month. It's, it's a very busy time for us as far as budgeting and, and our grants and, and different things we have going for the next month, so that may have to wait until after we're done through that heavy schedule, but if people are wondering why we haven't taken any action on those yet, that's, that's kind of the reason. Um, I was able to attend the tenth anniversary of the Black Bears at, in Granville at the ballpark, and, um, it was really neat, uh, most of Granville was there, and, uh, as far, I should say, most of the Granville government was there, I'd say, uh, most of Granville, but it was very nice, and, uh, the ballpark looks great, the new pads are on the, um, on the outfield, the advertising's not on them yet, that's coming. The, um, the field looks wonderful, the new turf. Um, at the request of Commissioner Bloom, we've, we've talked to WVU about improving the seating numbers on the seats, they've kind of faded away, the ones that are in the sun, so that's in the works to try to, to get those, so you can actually find your seat number when you go down there, so we've, uh, we've asked to get that addressed, so it was a lot of fun. They talked about the legislature, we've been there, um, and funny story, my, my daughter volunteered at Empty Bowls, and to Commissioners Bloom's statement of, uh, dancing on tables and chairs, she had known Commissioner Bloom from her days at Mount near Middle School when he would show up with food for kids and, and everybody knew Tom was, she, she would say, Tom gave me beef jerky today, so, uh, and other kids, he, Tom's always giving out food, but, so she told me about his antics, and then two hours later, my wife says to me, is Tom okay?